How's the patient?
Much better. Thank God.
I know.
Cooler thing really helped.
Did it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems to me if you get past the pain part, that's a big part of it.
And on top of it, they told him that the doctor wasn't gonna let him drive as long as he took pain pills, so he quit taking them. I mean, way back.
Oh, really?
Tyler O'Leary.
Well, they're awful tight on that anymore, you know, and how many they'll give you.
They used to give you a huge volume, you know, and you'd take like two and then you were done with them and you had this whole.
They only gave three.
I was gonna say now they just give you like two days or three days or something.
When I surgery last year, they gave me a hundred and twenty bills.
Oh, my gosh.
I said, I can get ten, and they said, your prescription says a hundred and twenty, we gotta get them all to you. I think I took three or four of them, and then took the rest back to Walgreens and then disposed of them.
It's crazy.
But it was only three or four dollars after, you know, insurance, they're only three or four dollars for a hundred and twenty. That's what's bad.
He said the pain didn't bother his stomach, so he didn't mind taking them anyway. But he's been going to therapy three times a week and it's really helping.
Yes. It off, it got hot awful quick, didn't it?
Oh, my gosh, it did.
Today was outrageous.
Looked like it's supposed to be a full month, baby, this weekend.
Like there's storms. What is, what is it, July ninth? Yeah, there's people out there, I'm like. Yeah, you would, yeah. There's still people doing it. Always look at those people doing asphalt on highway and stuff, these kind of days. Well, usually start a sunup, quit it, try to quit early.
Go ahead and call our meeting in order if we can all rise and say with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jane, if we can go ahead and get a roll call.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill? Jane, yes, Kathleen, no.
Do we have anybody that wishes to address the board?
No.
This evening?
Okay.
We want to welcome Caitlin Cordes from the Daily News, thanks for coming. We'll go ahead and move on then to the treasurer's bond. Jason, did you want to go over that?
Sure. Annually, we have to secure a treasurer's bond to allow me to do my job. Based on the fund balance we have and the amount of money we have in the bank at one time in the course of the year, they set that treasurer's bond amount. And so I've worked through Bushy Home Resources, they went out to Nixon, which is Travelers Insurance and secured the bond. The amount for the bond this year is eight thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. That's an increase of eight hundred and thirty-three dollars over last year, and then that's because we still have over six million dollars in H L S money in account.
Is there any questions about the treasurer's bond? If not, we would need a motion to approve the F Y twenty-one treasurer's bond through Travelers Insurance at a cost of eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brad, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Robin, roll call.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jane, yes, Kathleen, Steve.
We'll go ahead and move on to the motion carries. We'll go ahead and move on to the payment of bills.
We have one bill that normally, do you remember last month, we had a very low H L S bill payment number compared to what normally is? And that was because the junior high project, Fetter Construction, could not get all the subs to give them their payoffs. And so they were trying to secure those, they didn't make our deadline, so they didn't get paid in June. Instead of making them wait until the end of July to get that money, since we had this meeting, I was going to ask if we could possibly pay the Fetter payments, so they can pay all the subcontractors in the amount of nine hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. That is what it worth them in May, that would have been paid in June.
Is there any questions? Okay, I'm hearing none. We would need a motion to approve the H L S bills.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brad, we have a second. I'll second. Roll call.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jane, yes.
Angie?
Yes. The Pixelot Camera Project, is that what you want to talk about?
This is a project that we had looked at in the fall, shared that information back in October, November with the board, and even had conversations with, with the company into January, but then we kind of put it on the back burner because of just what was going on. The Pixelot Camera is a project that they're fixed cameras and they have A I and artificial intelligence where they follow the ball. So if it's a volleyball game, it automatically, nobody has to run the camera, it's automatic. And N F, N F H S, National Federation of High School, has a, has an agreement with Pixelot to provide. Well, in the past, they had an agreement to be able to put these and sell these into schools. We kind of put that on a back burner because one of the things that, I did have conversations with W X E F back in the fall, that they do video, live stream a couple of our, like St. Anthony and T-Town basketball games, but that's it, our boys and sometimes girls. But if we had these, this opportunity, you could do volleyball, you could do any ba, any level of basketball. You could do a band concert if you wanted to do it. So fast forward till July fourth, I H S A Executive Director Craig Anderson sent out an email about the parameters of teams and everything. And in that email, he said that they have a new agreement for every I H S A school would, could receive up to two free cameras. And so that means any school that already had them. So there are some schools that already did this, and we kind of looked at those at Flora and Monticello and things like that. It's been a very positive thing. So that came on Monday, saw the email on Monday. And so we had talked, actually, one of the coaches approached us in June saying, hey, whatever happened, can we go back and look at, look at these cameras again? And I said, well, yeah, we can go through the facilities and transportation committee. Well, then I got that email on Monday, we have this meeting today, so I thought, well, I'll bring it in front of the board because, quite frankly, I think there'll be a run on these. And it'll be, there's a thirty-day notice before they can start. So we're kind of in front if the board wants to approach this. So here are the parameters, it costs four thousand dollars for installation, that's the catch, they're free, but there's installation. But it's a one-time cost. And the way that works is it is a subscription, and if people want to, they can, it's voluntary. At this point, it was ten dollars a month or seventy dollars for the year, and that could, and everything. So what we would do is send them all of our schedules, and then the district still has, the school still has the ability to blackout certain things because there are certain coaches that don't want past up there. So that'd be on a case-by-case basis. But the idea would be, I did talk with Greg again today, or yesterday, and I also talked to Chris Custer because of the tournament. That's really not, while we host it, it's an outside entity that runs that tournament, it's not ours. And so W X E F has been showing that championship game. So just like the Crossroads Classic, the Volleyball Classic, and the Christmas Classic, what I would consider in talking to them would be, that would be an outside entity. So if W X E F and the Christmas Classic wanted to continue doing that, that, that would be up to them. But we can't have anybody else livestream. Now, they can tape it, put it on DVD, and then sell it or whatever if they want to, like they have done in the past. So that's still an option. But that's the major change, is that all of it would, the live streaming would run through, run through that camera and that agreement.
So is this all of the subscription money go to Pixelot?
No, there's some that comes back, a certain amount, ten percent of the monthly subscriptions would come back to the school, and then the school receives a twenty-dollar annual subscription rate, so, so it's not a lot of money. You know, and I don't know, yeah, there's options if you want to do, sell into advertising and all that, but that's, that's a, as we've got with many phases right now, whether it's construction, COVID, that would be a phase two or three down the road. But this, you know, it's, it's an opportunity to, for people that are out of town, alumni, grandpa, grandma, parents, cousins, whatever, to obviously watch games if they so choose. We have hard, hard-wired internet, so it's not like, it's, that's what they request, and it, which is better. So that would be the possibility. It's a five-year lease, so within five years, it can be done or it can be continued.
We don't know what kinds of limits there would be on spectators at events this year.
Right.
Also, so this would allow, right, this would allow people in the community that usually would attend in person to see it.
One, well, I think, what is it, twenty percent of the available seating is all you can actually have per year. You know, so I know when talking to Dave, he's already got calls from other schools saying he can only bring a hundred and seventy-five people, that's all we're gonna let in, and those types of things. So, yeah, and then, in fact, when we talk about graduation, well, that's something that severely limits that possibility. The goal would be to get it done before school, you know, if we can get it in next week and make sure that everything's, because I talked to him again today, just to make sure everything's where we need it and what we need, and then hopefully we can, we can do that if the board wants to move forward with it. Again, I usually would have gone through the facilities and transportation, but this happened over the fourth. Monday, we have a meeting, I thought, okay, I'll put it out there, if it's something that we support, then we'll move forward, we'll be one of the first in, in our area. If not, we would wait till July, and then, and if we wanted to do it, then we'd jump in and be wherever we are in the, the scheme of things. But I think it's a lot of.
I think it's a really good option, given the uncertainty that was mentioned where we're at. I did, I've watched a couple of Flora basketball games on it, it is pretty impressive, it tracks right along with the game and everything, so.
That's the big thing.
I haven't seen a football game, though.
Yeah, there's some on, on that website. You know, and Google that, but the issue, or the thing that really kind of struck me last fall was, you don't have to, the problem is getting people there to do it.
Right.
You know, be there every game, and you don't have to do that. The other issue, like one of the coaches brought up, that it's a positive, is the coach can use it for practice, and only the coach sees it. So it's on, you can, you can plan for showing a practice and doing this and that, and if it's a scrimmage or something like that, that they can go back and watch that, just like it's a, it works with Huddle, which is a scouting software the coaches use.
Anybody else, anybody else had any other questions for Mr. Jen? Did you get it, Jill? So we'll go ahead and see, is there a motion to approve video streaming agreement with the N F S H S and Pixelot at a cost of four thousand dollars?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brad, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Second, Robin, roll call.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes, Kathleen. Angie?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead and move on to the possible graduation ceremony. I think Mr. Robert is here.
He saw it with them.
So I, I kind of lead into it and let him, let him jump in. You know, we had reset a date for July nineteenth, and we've been talking about what options we have, and then we got the, the parameters from the state, and we've kind of talked over about that could be done, it probably, it has to be done outside, we talked about having fifty, fifty, and fifty, and it just didn't seem feasible. And, and so there is an option to go outside. He did reach out with a couple of phone calls, and some of the, what we found out is that automatically rolls over on July one, so we had to go back and find an old file to find the phone numbers to call all the seniors. That was why we had to do it the next day, and then, then we put it on the website and on, on the app. So he sent me an update this morning, and so far, out of a hundred and fifty, there were only forty-three that said, yes, they would want that. Now, we've heard, we, I've heard, you know, and this, again, not scientific, but, you know, some seniors are done, they're, they're moving on, they don't want to do this anymore. But I'll kind of go, turn it over to Kurt. What we were talking about is having it outside on the track, and you have to limit, because of the twenty percent seating, that only two people per student could be there. And so, that's if you had a hundred and fifty, I mean, if you don't have a hundred and fifty. So that's kind of where we're at, but I'll turn it over to Kurt, I, he shared with me this morning, forty-three, I don't know if those numbers have changed, ten have said no, and then we haven't heard from about ninety of them, so.
The only change in those numbers is now we're at forty-nine, so forty-nine students, there are a hundred and fifty graduates.
Can you move, can you move up a little bit? I didn't give you a microphone. That's, I just talked last.
I can do it, you're fine, Brad. All right.
It's not gonna reach any of us.
I, there's a hundred and fifty graduates right now, and as you know, I put out a school message, messenger message on Monday. I posted it to Facebook and to our district's app on Tuesday, and I put out another school reach message on Wednesday, and asking everybody to respond by today. And so at the end of the day, three o'clock today, we have forty-nine graduates who have said that they would come. We have nineteen definite nos, and then eighty-two that we hadn't heard from. We actually have fourteen valedictorians and one class president of those, eight have committed to being there, two, three now that I know of have said no, and that makes four of them that I haven't heard from. So that just kind of gives you an idea of what we've had reported back from the class. When I walked in, you guys were talking a bit, maybe a little bit, if I'm not mistaken, about maybe why we haven't had more people wanting to be there. So what I have, a couple of reasons that are a little more prevalent. One being, in some cases, we've got students who are just not in the area anymore, some of them have already left the school, some of them are military along those. Probably the most common one, though, is they're done, it's not meaningful to them any longer. They've moved on, had a great conversation with a young man today that came in to get some other paperwork, and he said, you know, at first I was a little disappointed in it, but we weren't gonna have it, but I'm not even really thinking about it anymore because I've put together all my stuff for college, I'm getting ready to move, and I'm really kind of moving on. So that's kind of where, obviously not all of them are, but that's kind of where we're at. So I, I don't know, do you want to know a little bit about what, if we do try to do this, how this would plan or how this would play out? The way I see this is, we wouldn't necessarily, even though students have called in, maybe if there were other kids that wanted to come, that wouldn't be a problem. The way I've got it planned is, the students would come, and I think I've got it on there, the students would show up early at four fifteen, and they would be at the big gym. Of course, they would, when we're inside, we'd have to have our masks on. But then basically, I would get them lined up, and we will give them a card, like a note card, and they will print the name the way they want to read. We will then, at the appropriate time, we will come out to the field. We, I've already kind of counted out where we would have to have people sit in the stadium to be able to make sure that we're being just socially distancing, we can skip every other one. And then put, basically, in one, you can have two people on each end of the bleachers and then two in the middle, and that allows us about fifty a section, all right? So the graduates would sit, probably depending on the level of stage of the track, whether we're on the track or on the grass in front of the track, but they would sit actually facing each other, so one group would be facing south, one group would be facing north. podium would be in the middle facing the bleachers. We would then, the, the people that are speaking would be able to speak to the bleachers and also to the graduates when it comes time to read the names. And this will get, you understand, this is going to be somewhat of a short-term version of graduation ceremony. We would be able to just, they could stand up, come to the podium, whoever's gonna read the names, they can lay their card down, the podium, they can read their name, they can walk down the middle of the aisle towards the stadium, come back and sit down, and then we can just miss them from there. We would probably play music, I don't know that I can get the band together at this point to get that done. I have one more question to my chat.
First of all, thank you for taking the time to put all this together. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of creativity to make this happen, having a senior, I know, but our families appreciate it, he appreciates it for what you went through for this. So a question on the, when you say forty-nine that we've got approved now, are we assuming since we have yeses that we're gonna go forward with it, or is it?
I guess that's one of the things we wanted to bring to the board, to see if we should go ahead and move forward or not.
Because my understanding is I'm gonna have to let, make them sit six feet apart, too, so we'll go get them pretty spread out. I'm sorry.
So that's about a third, right now, we have about a third of the kids committed.
And the deadline is?
It was today.
The deadline.
But now, again, I don't want people to think, since, since this is gonna have to probably, I don't want people to think that if you haven't called by now, that you couldn't do this.
Right.
Right? But we were just trying to get an idea of, of the general interest in this at this point. A lot of it has to do with, you know, we're on a kind of numbers issue here, as to how many kids we can add on space and seating along those lines. So I don't want people to get the idea that they couldn't come, even though they didn't call yet, but that's what the commitment we've got so far, and the feedback we've gotten so far.
And this is for the night team?
Next, a week from Sunday.
And we did change, you may know this already, we did change the time from two o'clock to five o'clock because of the temperature. We just knew that two o'clock on, on a July afternoon, since we knew that we were gonna have to move it outside, and that really has to do with fifty-person limit. We can't, we can't do it inside, I mean, under the guidelines that we're given now, it won't be allowed to happen inside.
And if the weather doesn't cooperate?
And if weather's permitting.
My, my, my recommendation is if we can't do the weather, then we're done.
Okay, yes. One of the, one, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
One of the things that you also have available, and you're gonna put out anyway, is the virtual, correct?
Correct, we have, we have a virtual ready to go. We just kind of hung on to it, not knowing exactly what we're gonna do with this, and so regardless of whether we do this or don't do this in the virtual, we try to make it as much of a ceremony as possible, we've recorded me announcing like National Honor Society and doing the introduction like I usually do. I introduce all the board members on that, all of our speakers have been recorded. Then we have basically, it's almost like PowerPoint slides, pictures of the graduates and names, and then they go through, and Mr. Fowler put that together actually sometime a couple, about a month or so ago. And got all this recorded, and that's ready to go. We're gonna release that regardless of what we do as far as this. I just didn't want, since it's got the kids' speeches on it, if they're gonna get a chance to do it in public, I didn't want to put it out there before that.
So you're saying that a hundred and fifty people can fit on those bleachers?
There's, you know, there's, the, there's, okay, like a section of the bleachers. If you do every bleacher, and you do two people on each end and two in the middle, which, by the way, socially distancing, you can do fifty per section.
Okay, and there's?
How many sections? Six.
So, so a hundred and fifty times two is, there's your three hundred, that was?
Right, and really what we are at, the guidelines is twenty percent, that holds fourteen hundred people. So twenty percent has two hundred and eighty, that's why we went with, I don't know if people understand, but when a random number, that's why we went with two. We do, if we add every, if every graduate came, we would actually be a little over twenty percent.
I think because we've advertised for so long that we're having it on that day, and whether you have fifteen or a hundred and fifty, I think you still have to be committed to the date.
I would agree.
I think, I think that we are graduates, the ones that have replied are expecting a ceremony, and I think we should, my opinion.
It's such a range of emotion for these kids, I think the ones that want the graduation, we should provide it for them, absolutely. And the ones that don't have the option not to attend. But I still think having the ceremony for those that want and desire the ceremony, we should give them that opportunity, but I'm glad you got the virtual ceremony for everybody.
I was gonna say, you know, I have really mixed feelings about it, because to me, it's a response when you've only got a third of the students, and it's not really gonna be the ceremony that they observed in the past. So it's gonna be, you know, really scaled back, and if you have this virtual presentation where they are all represented, and all the speeches are given, and so on, you know, I think that, you know, I don't know if that would suffice or not. I guess I just, I, I question, I, I don't, if, the response to me just doesn't seem that strong, and if the message went out all those ways that you said, they had to know about it. And so I really feel that that's probably a pretty legitimate return on responses. But, you know, like I said, I'm not against having something for the kids, but I, I'm just not sure if there are that many that really want it. That's just my thought.
I'm kind of with Jill and Brad, if, if we have students that wanted, that want to go ahead and have the graduation, I'm all for it, like, that's the least we can do.
It's the least we can do.
And there could be, I mean, R S V P-ing is.
Yeah, we could, I would expect that number to go up.
Even the most etiquette-rule people do not follow R S V Ps as they should. So I have a feeling that there's probably even a few more that will still participate.
I think it'll go up.
And especially since this is probably going to end up in the media. You know, I mean, I, I really think we'll have more responses. I don't, I could be wrong, but, yeah, let's just say fifty kids, that's fifty kids, fifty kids that haven't had a graduation. And we're not giving up on them, they can move on if they want, but the fifty that want to come, I think we should still have it.
And some kids may not be going on to college or additional schooling, so this could be their only graduation, if they get the opportunity to go through, so I think it's important to make sure that they have that opportunity.
I'm not sure that five o'clock in the afternoon versus two o'clock in the afternoon, temperature-wise, will make that big of a difference.
How long is the ceremony anticipated to last?
Typically, a typical ceremony is run about an hour and fifteen minutes. That's with a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty graduates typically, that's with all of the speeches, that's with, and now I'm even, I probably won't announce things like National Honor Society because we've only got a third of the class, and I probably won't do those kind of things, and that's all in that virtual ceremony anyway. So my anticipation is it's gonna be anywhere in the hour.
Is there somebody who we can do it like at seven, maybe, would it be a little?
A little later?
I mean, you can make the time however you want.
I mean, I.
We have lights.
Change the time already because we've been making plans.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I'm just cautioning you, you can make whatever time you want, I can make it available, and we can do it whenever, but.
I mean, if it's just a response to the heat, if that was what Jill's concern was there, from two to five, maybe, I, I guess I'm not sure.
Right, well, if the sun's coming from the west.
So we behind them.
So it'll be behind them. When you're trying to take a picture in the stands, you'll be looking right into the sun, taking, trying to take pictures. Is it any better at seven?
Are, are we able to, are we able? Are we able to broadcast the graduation?
So that's a big question to, basically, the only way that I know of, and again, keep in mind, I'm a guy, and that's technology's own thing. But what I've looked into so far is that you would have to be able to have, kind of like what we do here. And so, and, but more than that, you're gonna have to have a camera of some kind, and so, I don't know. I mean, this is something that's a little bit beyond me at this point, be able to have that camera, it's gonna have to be, that camera's gonna have to be connected somehow to the internet. We do have internet access in the press box, I've not tested it at any point, I've never used it out there, I don't think there's any Wi-Fi, right?
We, we actually have fiber in the timing booth we just built next to the track too.
Okay. So are that the cameras, that's part of that's going to be, so I guess I, I just. I'm going to need some help with that, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
I wonder if we can get a couple of multimedia kids to help or possibly, I mean, I don't know.
Not in school, so we're going to track them down and then finding them and they're working and, you know, that's been my experience with that.
I don't know if I, I mean, I get the time and the, and the heat wise, but I don't know if I would want to change the time, maybe.
I would rather change it.
Yeah, again.
A lot, yeah.
Or change the date and the time.
Right.
Because we had to.
Yeah. So.
There's a lot of people that can't, and maybe that's the, maybe that's the reason for the RSVPs, if only two guests can come and we're not having a plan to broadcast it. It could be why the level of interest, I mean.
But we don't have the capability.
Yeah, I'm not sure we have the capability. I mean, we can look into it.
Multimedia kids, I mean, that's not a live stream. I mean, that would just be a tape that could be played back later, wouldn't be a live stream. So it wouldn't be like a broadcast like I think we're talking about.
Yeah, there's, to me, those are two different ones, live stream versus taping it are two, two.
And we've got the virtual graduation that's got everybody in it.
So will both of those go out? I mean, or the virtual graduation will still?
I don't know if we can do a virtual graduation, so I can't speak to that one.
I thought, I thought the virtual.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And we're still going to release that virtual graduation.
Correct, yes.
Any other questions for Kurt or, no? Um, are we all in favor of going ahead with the graduation ceremony?
We'll get a voice vote if we want, yes.
Let's, do you want to do, let's do a voice vote.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, whatever, I, yeah, that's whatever else wants, they just said that, so yeah, I'm good with that.
One of the items is if, if you are interested in being out there, need to let Kurt know, uh, because probably, wow, I don't know where it's been put.
What, what I would ask you to do is just call Shell and let Shell know during the next couple of days and then, uh, I don't know where I'm going to see that.
Six feet apart, hopefully.
Six feet apart. Yeah.
We'll just reach out, wave.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and direct Kurt to go ahead and, and go through with the plans for the graduation ceremony. Thank you Kurt for coming in and discussing that. Hey, big topic of discussion, uh, the remote learning plan.
Okay, um, I guess that shouldn't be the, the name of it. We should call it the, uh, as I've, well, just want to be upfront with everybody that these are drafts, right? And, uh, but I, I think they're, they're pretty strong drafts. Combination of information from the state, from other school districts, from attorneys. Um, I did have our attorney look at these as well. Uh, it doesn't have any issues with anything that we're doing. Now, if, obviously if it changes, we'll, we'll have him check it again. But, so, the first item, um, so nothing's written in stone and I want to make sure everybody in the public and, and the media know that at this point, but the draft number four is just of the start of the school year. So in the curriculum committee, we talked about finding out, um, one of the big items is are we offering an option for parents and students? We plan to have in-person learning in the district. But we also talked about offering an option for students and parents to have a remote learning, free, um, family choice remote learning. So I guess that is one of the reasons why I haven't sent anything out yet. I want to make sure that we're all on the same page on that because this is, this is a choice not because of a medical issue or, or anything else. It's, uh, for whatever personal reasons that they, they want. And so that was the discussion at the curriculum committee. And I just want to throw that out there first because I think that's one of the major items that we need to make sure we're all on the same page at least moving forward. So are, are there questions about that? Are there clarifications?
One of the things I felt like on this update, I'm sorry, did you just try to say something? I, I just think it would be good if we had a passage about, I mean, there, there's so much information out there about, um, I, I can't think of the word I want, superiority isn't probably the right term, but how much better in-person instruction is than remote learning. So, you know, that emphasis that, that that is going to be a much higher quality experience for the student. Um, and, you know, because of course we hope, you know, that the majority of our students, uh, will choose to do that because it is so much stronger for them, not only academically, but also emotionally and socially and all the important things that go into an individual student's growth. So I, I think that would be an important thing to add in there, you know, that it, it is, and the remote learning is an option, but it provides limited opportunity, I guess.
And that's what we've talked in the curriculum committee at length and, and even had a conversation with Steve Raymond this week. And that, that's one of the things research shows is that there is no substitute for the teacher-student learning relationship. And so I appreciate you bringing that forward. Other, other questions or clarifications? I mean, is that the direction the district is moving? There are some districts that are not offering, they're just saying we're going in person and going from there unless there's a medical issue. But from the curriculum, I mean, in our discussion in the committee, that was, there were going to be two options.
So quick question on it, the family choice is that at the beginning of the year or can we get a quarter into the school year and decide I'm not real comfortable with the way?
Well, if you go down into a little bit deeper, you have to make that choice by a certain date. And if it was, and this is, I think, still something we're talking about tonight, but if it's K five initially, the curriculum committee said you would be committed for nine weeks. And, uh, six twelve, you were committed for a semester. So you couldn't pop in and out of remote learning and back to in-person. But I, I think that we're going to talk about whether both of those K twelve should be a semester as opposed to, uh, nine weeks for the lower grades. But, so, there was a deadline when you would have to commit and once you were committed, you would have to be in order.
The time period specified in here, okay.
No, we, we've got to know.
Right.
I've actually thought about that and the only concern I have with that is if we're telling, you know, if students, if students and their families choose to do remote learning and say after seven weeks, they realize that they're struggling. Then we're telling them that they can't come back for the whole semester where if they could possibly come back at the nine weeks, they actually would have another nine weeks to try to get called back up. So that's where I'm concerned about. Like, I feel like maybe if they're going to commit, they, they have to at least commit to the nine weeks. Um, I just feel like some of them might lose credit if they don't come back.
And I think that's a good point and I think what, to what Robin said, it's, it's very important for people to understand that there is a distinct difference in the learning capabilities for the in-person versus remote.
Especially at the high school level. I think we talked about the fact because of the semester block of instruction that goes on and the planning that goes on. And what's happening in the classroom in person day to day is not necessarily going to equate to what's happening in the remote learning situation. So for somebody to be in there for seven weeks in remote learning and then say I'm ready to come back at the end of the nine weeks and then they may not be in the same spot exactly, you know, as, as the class that has been in person. Now, I, it may be more workable in the lower grades, but I, I could see that at the high school, maybe the semester would maybe be a little more necessary.
Yeah, I think, uh, at least in our discussion, it was more of a, um, the school, the high schools set on semesters. And, and really even the junior high even, because that's a natural switch. The, um, I, I guess I would say, because, I mean, I know I feel so strongly that the, the teacher-student relationship, we need that. Our students and our kids need that. And obviously if a parent wants to choose not to do that, that's their choice and, and we'll support that and provide a good education. But we can't provide the same edu, it, it's just not apples and apples. Um, and also, you know, one of the things we keep thinking about and, and I'll talk about a little bit later is, you know, from our staff's perspective of having a class and, and having kids come and go, we, that's something that we really got to make sure we, we, uh, understand because that's going to be even tougher. But there's going to be plenty of situations where, aren't going to be good.
There's going to be a lot of coming and going if there are outbreaks. Cause there'll be a lot of two-week of coming and going.
Could be.
Contagious as it is with young people.
Again, this is why this is a draft.
Right.
And this may change, uh, you know, we don't start till August twenty-fourth, which might be a little bit better. And we're still planning to start on August twenty-fourth, so.
There was a lot of talk too among the administrators, logistically, um, nine weeks versus a semester. That lunchroom setups, getting kids in and out of eating. If, if at seven weeks or nine weeks, twenty-five kids come back, that's a total change to, to the schedule of the building. Because now those kids have to eat at a whole different time, the whole schedule changes. So if you do it on semesters and they have to let you know December first that they want to come back in January, then you have time to rework the whole schedule and get it to staff and get it reviewed over a break before the kids come back. And, and all those schedule changes that have to happen in the building can happen. Um, versus trying to do it o- over a weekend kind of idea, like you'd have to on a, on a nine-week change. So there was a lot of logistics that went into it, um, with, with trying to think nine weeks versus a semester. It was very logical junior and high school, but then elementary set down and really looked at it. And for the way they have to schedule things, given the guidelines, uh, a semester is preferred there as well.
And then just one piece to make sure that's said out loud and clarified, for the family choice remote learning folks that decide to select that option, the expectations for grading, homework, participation are the same as the in-person?
Correct.
Teaching, is that correct?
We'll kind of get to that.
I'm jumping ahead.
Yeah.
I'll follow along.
That's okay, there's a couple of things I wanted to say too, and I'm like, you guys should wait till you do that.
Alright, I'm going to wait now.
Well, I just, I want to clarify that we're going to have, uh, we are going to provide options. I just want to make sure that's the direction we're going to go.
When do you think we will know how many people will, will want to?
Well, we were looking at, uh, we were looking at the twenty-fourth of July for, you know, for them to let us know for sure. The other, the other part of this is we, you know, from a staff's point of view too. And I'm going to send that out probably tomorrow or over the weekend. Um, uh, you know, because if, if there are staff that for whatever medical reasons, um, uh, need accommodations, there may be some of that too. So that could be a whole wrinkle in this whole thing that.
And will it be possible if we do have some staff for medical reasons, uh, not come back, that, um, somehow those people can handle the remote learning part of it? Um, and where they would kind of be working full-time, you know, from.
That would be, yeah, I mean, we, we talked about that and that was, that would be one of the major options. I mean, in the real life scenario, if we had twenty kindergartners, families choose to stay, you know, family choice, and we had one teacher, there's a match. Rarely if it'll happen that way. But, um, you know, we did some of that at the, this summer in regards to having a couple of staff members follow up with those students who needed to be helped, pushed along to try to finalize some items. So, and they weren't in their specialty area.
Right.
But they're educators.
And we can combine some grades. I mean, I went to first and second grade in the same classroom and third and fourth grade in the same classroom. And I was central school, unit forty.
Well, I was kind of thinking that like, you know, say like at the junior high, if they have, um, like their science department. Um, if there was a science teacher maybe that couldn't, didn't work for them to maybe come to school, um, that they would actually be in charge of like technically all the remote learners for the science department for all grades.
All this depended upon numbers, right? So even, uh, and let me just throw this out there as, as we talk about this because we get to a point of, of, of certain numbers and I don't know what that number is. I don't know if that's ten percent, if that's fifty, I don't know what that number is. But, um, we can't, and, and we can't have staff teach all day.
Right.
And then turn around and do remote learning. At the same time. So it just, it's not going to be physically, it's not, it's not good for, you know, it's just not good. And, and we need to keep that in mind. And so one of the things that, that I threw on here in this back to school, which encompasses a lot, some more items, you know, possibly an early out every day if that, if those numbers are that high.
Yeah.
Um, you know, where we would go from, and, and again, all this, we, we will sit down with the unions as well and talk with them. And so we've shared that with, with the leadership and we'll continue to have those conversations, but not in stone, just an option would be to maybe you go from seven thirty to one thirty at the high school. And you have lunch starting at twelve forty-five, which we're going to have a hard time. It'll be very, it's going to be difficult to do the lunch parameters at fifty a person or fifty in a group when you have that many students in one spot. So that could be an option if the numbers are supported, where you have an, you have early release, but to be early release, it depends across, across the district. But that's something that always depended upon those numbers. Um, obviously we would want to come back on a regular schedule and have a school day. Uh, we're trying to keep as much normalcy as possible, but it's not going to be normal. And that's one of the things in here, this isn't going to be the same fall opening as we've had forever. So that's, that other thing, the other issue, I, well, other issue, there's a lot of issues, but moving forward. So, um, on, on screenings, uh, student screenings, um, we're looking at, um, having the parent self-certify. Uh, we've asked our attorneys to develop that and they're going to forward that. Um, where the parent would self-certify that, that child is, uh, symptom, doesn't have symptoms. Number one, on a bus, we can't, students are there getting on the bus, we, we can't check every student, um, getting on a bus. Uh, so we have to do that. Plus, you know, we talked, you know, about having seven hundred and twenty-five or six hundred and fifty junior high kids and checking every one of their temperatures as they come in the building. That's, we won't start school on time. So many districts, majority, if not all, are going with the self-certification, um, option. Um, will we have outliers? Yes, and we'll deal with those. So, um, but we'll be prepared, um, to be able to handle that, um, moving forward. But we're going to ask that parents self-certify that their child is, is symptom-free.
I thought that that section would be better if we added the word daily in there.
Yes, I was just going to have to get that the daily.
Self-certify them every day.
Every day.
Before they send them. And there's nowhere in that passage that says, I just said self-certify, like, just vouch once.
Right. And then is there going to be a way to certify it electronically on an app? And should that be just discussed here?
Well.
And who's, how will we know that it's being, I mean, how do we, do they fill out a form? Where does the form go?
Well, that, yeah. At, at this point, uh, in talking with our, the attorneys, um, they should check them daily. But receiving that daily is not going to, receiving a, a feedback is not going to be feasible. So we have to come to some sort of agreement on, on, on how often do we receive that from a, from a parent or guardian? We'll spend more time searching down a form than actually doing anything else. So that's, those are, that's one of those open-ended questions we don't.
So, so what we're thinking is kind of like a handbook form, we give you, the parents sign off at the beginning of the year. They would sign off on the same form, it'd be turned in, you know, and then that, that is their one form. And then when they send. And then when they send their kid to school every day, the kid shows up, that means the parent certified that they were healthy before they left.
So they're certifying that they're going to do this daily?
Yes.
And we'll have to send reminders and things like that, but we, we can't.
Yeah, I mean, we can put a daily, or a weekly reminder out on the app, maybe don't forget, you know, whatever.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things in here that are probably good that just can't be administered. You know, the way that we want to administer, or we most probably should. And I'm just being honest, that's, we're, we're gonna, as it came across this afternoon meeting with the other superintendents, we're gonna do the best we can to meet everything that's in here. And that's, and we'll do a hundred percent what we can, and so that's, that's what we have to try to do.
My only other thought, and Mark, I think I say a couple of questions probably too late in the day, but on on this, I think it's, I think the only way we can do it is to have the parents, you know, certify to this, but is having clearly stated the outlier process, so if you can, I mean, you can usually tell, at least with my kids, I can tell when they're not feeling good. I'm sure teachers get to know their students pretty well, and they can tell when they're not feeling good, so what is that process for during the day? If we wanted to take temperatures, do we have the equipment and the process to follow up on afterwards?
We already have those, I mean, if you look at the symptoms.
Make sure that's clearly.
There's not much difference than we have that every day, you know, we have kids coming down one.
I know.
You know, so there's a process in that, if we have, if we know who those kids are, we'll, we'll develop a plan for that.
Take the temperature.
Yep.
I am, I am really concerned about people checking those. I I know that that's, we don't have the capability to check every student, but you know, in the past, I'm I'm sure people have, you know, their childbirth was sick and they needed them to go to school and they gave them Tylenol and sent them on, and so I'm just concerned that we're not gonna have everybody checking daily and.
I'm sure you're right.
I don't know how, what we do about that.
Yeah.
I think we have to. We have to hope that people take it seriously.
Yes.
Let me move on to the, to the easy one, face coverings.
Haven't been reading social media.
So, I mean, at this point, uh, the requirements are that, uh, face coverings are worn at all times. Um, on the bus, uh, you mentioned, you asked about that, so it it, it's in there. It's under transportation, so, um, you know, wearing face coverings at all times. Now, unless they have some sort of, uh, release, that is something that we'd have to deal with, so we could have some that do and some that don't, I'm just being honest with you, if if we have kids that have doctor's reasons and medical reasons, and then we'll have to deal with that, but.
If they have a medical reason, though, would that not send them down the remote learning path?
I don't think so, or at least strongly consider that.
There's, there's, there's the concern, and there are cases out there already where wearing a mask makes it hard for them to breathe. So they take the mask off, they can participate like anybody else. And so doctors are writing notes saying this person cannot wear a mask. But they can still, but they can still participate in face-to-face learning.
Right, but we're, we're offering this option because we are requiring masks per the state guidance and science and all medical professionals, so if that person is unable to wear a mask, I would think that that would qualify that person for remote learning. I mean, I thought that's why we were offering the remote learning, um, option, I guess. I mean, there is not one way we can protect, there's not just one method we can use to protect any individual, students, teachers, whatever. So we have to pile on all that we can, you know, the hand washing, the cleaning, the the face mask, we have to pile that on and hope that that creates a safe enough cocoon that we can protect our staff and teachers and students as much as possible, so. When we start stripping those away and allowing tons of exceptions to that, then I, I think we're defeating the purpose. It's not a matter of convenience, it's, it's a matter of public health.
Well, I get, you know, and that's something we'll have to have more discussion and, and, because from an administrator's point of view, we're gonna need some firm direction of of steps to take, right? Because it becomes, we, we talked about in the curriculum, just to bring up, in the curriculum committee, is this being a health issue, not a discipline issue, right? So how do we handle health issues if you don't have your vaccinations? You send home. So at some point, you know, we're gonna probably send kids home.
Right.
If they're not gonna wear a mask. So that's how we we handle it, because on the di- the discipline issue is not, that's not gonna change any behavior on, in regards to that. So, you know, that's what we talked about in the curriculum committee, was a, it was a health issue, not a discipline issue, so uh, at some point, we'll have to, um, I hope not, but at some point, we're gonna have to ask students, we're gonna have to become picked up.
On the face masks, if we're having everyone wear them or requiring them to be worn, it says that each student and staff member will be provided with a cloth mask. And parents and guardians are asked to provide additional ones. I think we're gonna have to address like making sure that we have five clean masks for the entire week, because how are we, if they have one cloth mask on Monday, those things are dirty by noon on Monday. Um, how are we gonna keep up with making sure everybody has not just a mask, but a clean mask?
Well.
I mean, we're gonna have to have more than one clean mask or.
This, the state is going to provide every student and staff member in the, in the state a mask. Okay, so that's kind of where that came from. We're gonna talk about a little later about purchasing some additional masks, right? And then all different types of of mask, um, whether they're ninety, M ninety, N ninety-five.
Yeah, they're the KN ninety-five.
And then also temporary or. Disposal.
One-time disposable.
So we're gonna need both.
Right.
But we also want to make sure that people understand and parents that they, and we've had, I've had some emails, can I wear my, from staff, can I wear my own? Sure, I mean, yeah, um, you know, so many people are already have those or going to get those or whatever. Yeah, that'll be an ongoing issue and we'll continue to purchase those as, as we can and and, uh, but our goal is that they come with a mask, unless something changes between now and August twenty-fourth, uh, from the state perspective. And then we'll be able to offer those as we go, and that means we're gonna have to continue to buy them.
I've seen, um, some schools that are releasing their plan, not right around us, but you know, they're Peoria Schools and Champion Urbana, they've all been releasing plans. And some of them are putting on their school supply list that students must, for school supplies, have five masks. So, I mean, if we're providing one, it could be four masks or whatever, but I mean, that would be something to consider, putting on a school supply list. And of course, we still would probably have to have some to provide for people that were unable to get those, but.
So everybody understands we're gonna, those are required at this point. If something changes, then we can adjust and adjust to that, but, um, you know, they started with the shields that were available. Then seven days later, they came out and said, no, they're not available. But I will tell you, there's some, in my opinion, there's some good use and need for using shields. Speech language, lower levels especially, kindergarten, preschool, even first, just the smile, being able to see facial expressions, learn those, foreign language at the high school. How do you teach and and see that without using those? So, uh, we'll see where where that goes, but I'm just saying, those are some, uh, you know, this, maybe you'll talk about later, the little shield over here uh, that you got built, um, that's a big face shield, but, uh, this is the most divisive topic in in any of the meetings that I've been a part of. So, um, just gonna need to be resolute at this point and move forward and, um, I'll leave it at that.
And I do think, uh, shield, I don't know exactly like that, but for somebody that's in one spot and is more in a one-to-one, like a speech teacher, maybe where they're in a one-to-one situation, that would make perfect sense to have that, um, type of shield.
So social distancing, um, as I put in there at the very beginning, it's the district's goal, we're gonna do social distancing as best as possible. Um, kind of hard on a bus, uh, with the numbers that they're providing, that we can provide on a bus, but we'll, we'll do that. The issue that I brought up earlier, you know, your, your, your movement in regards to between classes, uh, some of the things that I know that some principals have talked about, at least at the high school, is having one-way release, uh, where they have to, you know, even go outside the building and come on the other side of the building, which we wouldn't have thought about a year ago or two years ago, but, um, we're in strange, strange situations. Um, I think the big ones are those areas of breakfast, lunch. Those are gonna be big issues or hard to deal with issues and and being able to try to meet those requirements. So, you know, yeah, we'll go outside when we can, but it's raining or when it gets cold, that's not gonna be an option, but we got, you know, used gyms. So we're gonna do this as best as possible. Uh, our staff will do the best, the job that they can and, um, and continue to move forward.
So regarding that, like you talked about lunches, are we thinking that we would be able to keep fifty kids in a spaced out in an area? Okay, so, I'm sorry, so if if we're having lunch and we're trying to social distance our kids, we have fifty kids, are they gonna be able to be six feet apart? Because every one of them are gonna have to take off their mask at some point.
Uh, I, will they be exactly six feet? They'll be anywhere from three to six feet, I would think. I mean, and that's what I've seen in some of the.
Things, things I talked about is they won't sit across from each other, all kids will sit facing the same direction. Uh, so that if there's not quite six feet between them, they're not sitting across from each other where they're breathing at each other. And they're all breathing the same dr- you know, same, so, uh, those are the things that principals are ironing out individually in their buildings, is how they're gonna space them out. You know, we're probably looking at having to buy cafeteria tables, because we don't have enough to spread them out that way, because they're used to sitting beside each other and across from each other. So there's a lot of things like that we're looking at, but right now, they're trying to figure all that out in their, in their, in their buildings, so.
I know exactly how many table that has right now. And on the seat, each table has.
You've done your homework, though.
They all face each other.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be different, it's gonna be very different than what we've been used to and what our kids have been used to, so. Transportation, um, we're gonna limit, we'll look to limit to fifty. You know, that, and we expect that'll be double routes, so, um, you know, that means people coming in at different times and are getting early or things like that, so, um, all kind of depends on the numbers back from our very first start or discussion on how many's gonna be on remote learning, right? To, if if that, I did, well, I talked to you about, um, we dropped some number of kids today just from other, other schools that may not be riding, so, uh, which will help, but the idea of, we are gonna ask if they are going to attend in person, can they be brought and dropped off and picked up by a family member? We usually ra- rather than ride the bus, but in this situation, it, it would help if they could. Now, that may mean to pick up and drop offs at schools, which causes another issue, right? So, you know, we'll have to work around all of that and try to work through that, so, um, we will, um, have people wearing face coverings, a mask, need to wear those, and we'll move forward from there. We'll be tran- sanitizing, um, those every day, uh, between, between routes, because we bought that in from, bought that equipment already.
Have we considered, um, because we're asking parents that normally send their kids on the bus, we're saying, we'd like for you to, you or your family member, bring your children. Are we going to consider accommodating? You know, some people put their kids on the bus because they have to go to work really early. Are we gonna have some sort of early or even late pickup before or after school so that it lessens our transportation needs? Have we considered that aspect?
We, we already have some late pickups anyway in some of our buildings. I don't know how late you were talk, you were thinking, but if we're getting out at three, if you're talking four-thirty or five o'clock, we have not talked about that.
Well, I would think that would be a little later.
Okay, well, I didn't know.
I'm just saying, like, there are some parents that have, if, if, if they get on the bus at seven, because some bus routes start seven, seven, ten in the morning, parents have to be at work at seven. Then they're at home alone because we're doing a double route until eight now, and I mean, so can they be dropped off at six forty-five or at seven?
We haven't.
To alleviate.
Yeah, we, we haven't had that, we have not had that discussion about providing that yet. We can look at that, um, and that'll be a staffing issue, but we could, you know.
It, it definitely would be, but having, I don't know. I'm just thinking that it would help if we could allow parents to drop off a little bit earlier than normal early drop off and a little bit later if we want to reduce our bus numbers. And that, we might have to find out survey-wise while we're talking about, do, do we have connectivity, do we have computers, do we have? Are you planning on going remote, you know, all those questions that we keep adding to the list to ask, this is the other thing, the other piece to that puzzle.
I think once we get the numbers, it'll help tremendously.
Right, and surveys have been brought up several times and I don't know where we're at with that.
Well, we have, we did surveys at the end of last year and 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 beginning of the summer. Um, and we've got the learn, what I, what was it called, learning option form? So when they choose, when a, when a parent chooses option one or option two, they have, they'll have information that they'll have to fill out on that form. You know, especially if they're have, choose option two. So, um, the transportation, uh, what, that's kind of been its own entity because it changes at the, at all times and depends on that, so I'm not sure that on July fifteenth or to twenty-fourth or whatever that timeframe is, that we can get that information and it'll still be good for August twenty-fourth when we start. So that may be a separate issue on the transportation part. Because we've, we've done that before, where we, they call who's on the bus, so they know who's riding or not riding, and they just call the parent and they figure that out, so, um, and if they're gonna be at home and we know they're not gonna be riding. So we'll, we'll look at that option as well.
I've noticed on some of the transportation sections on other schools, and I was looking to see if we said that, that they make a point that there will be assigned. uh, that they make a point that there will be assigned seats on the school buses, so that the student always will be going to the same spot as opposed to wandering around trying to decide where they're gonna sit. So they would be spaced out appropriately.
We have not talked about that.
Would they be doing double, when you're talking about double routes possibly, would they just be doing double routes in for in-town, or would that be all over?
What we've talked about is there may be a a number of buses who will do a short route in-town and then go back and pick up a group of kids and go out of town. And so they may take twenty, twenty-five kids on the first route, hit an in-town area, go back, pick up, you know, their fifty kids and head out to the country. Uh, and try to do, try to do those in-town routes as quickly as possible with a small, you know, with a small number of kids, then grab a second group and go. And because we have a number of buses who, at one point in time, may have sixty-five kids, now may only be for two minutes from one building to another building, but, you know, we can't do that anymore, so.
Yeah, at the, at the end of the day, on the transfer buses, the transfer from building to building, that's where our issue's gonna be, a major issue.
How, how many parochial school kids do we service on our buses?
Uh, roughly, I, you know, the number, I'd say around eighty that actually ride.
That actually ride the bus, right. Like, I know that we pick up, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a guess. Food service, um, obviously, we're gonna try to um limit some certain um items and and um how we go about plating and packaging those and setting the trays up for kids instead of having them pick them up and those types of things, that'd be probably more at the lower level than the upper level. So you know, I don't have anything more to add at this time. Once we find out what the schedule's gonna look like, gotta be a big deal. Because if if we do have early release, then uh, you know, it'll be a little bit different at the high school. The other schools would still go, you know, from eight to two, but um, the high school would look much different.
There was just one item under here that caught my attention, and because it just hit me kind of in a funny way, where we say areas where students consume meals will be clean and disinfected. You don't normally.
I know.
Just drawn extra.
What's something another about it being extra clean?
Because what we're looking at is, you know, uh, they're actually table with mops, like a part of mops that we put in and disinfect it. And after we've wiped them down, we run that down the table and back to coat it with a disinfectant, so it kills everything that's. So it'll be additional.
Disinfected and then you put it in your mouth and then you.
The other items, just on cleaning and disinfecting, or just jumping over to the next page. We're talking about classrooms being regularly cleaned and sanitized, um, high-touch surfaces, those types of issues. Um, restrooms, hallways, cleaning schedules, we bought equipment to go in and sanitize a room. So, you know, vote Jason and and Building Grounds Director and then also administrators and staff work together in regards to coming up with that. Uh, those individual building level plans, uh, because that is a schedule issue, you know. Um, gonna do the best we can and uh with the staff that we have and and try to hit those high, high-touch areas more so.
Question on this one, are we allowing students to bring their own cleaning supplies if they wanna wipe down their desks or their workspace before they use it that day?
Only reason why is I get asked that at work, and I'm like, why, why not?
Yeah.
But.
I can't think why we wouldn't, I mean.
I'm just saying, the CDC guidelines say it's supposed to be seventy percent alcohol to be, you know, thoroughly contain the virus. They bring something in that's not and use it. You know, I wanna make sure that we're still going after and doing our cleaning, even though they bring something in, but if someone wants to bring something in, we shouldn't discourage that, right? If they want to, it's just not called out in here specifically, but if they wanna bring their.
A container, corrottes wipes with them and they wipe their desk, then I don't see an issue with that.
It'll come up, that's why. Really.
Heck, we might just say, keep going, going.
Your neighbor's desk.
Your neighbor's desk.
Um, option two, remote learning, uh, kinda trying to touch base on some of the items. Um, daily attendance and engagements required, uh, grading, GPA, all of that will be in effect and fully implemented. I just put it in there, remote learning in the fall of twenty-twenty will be much, will be more rigorous than spring of twenty-twenty. That means introduction, new material, along with assessment.
So my question again on that, we say more rigorous, but we are, are we saying the same as the in-class? Grading, homework, everything's the same, whether you're in school or out of school, because it says more rigorous, so one might be able to say, well, it's a little more lenient.
Well, I'm, I was more rigorous than.
Than when it was before.
Than when it was in the spring.
Agreed, okay.
So y- yeah, I mean, we're.
Just wanna make sure that fam- that family choice folks that select, gotta understand expectations.
Yeah, it's not going to be uh.
Real quick, we, we were, we, I think we skipped over the classroom guidelines, which was fine as you did, but I had a question. So are we gonna have all the alternative seating? Are they gonna be able to keep their alternative seating in the classrooms that they have? Is it called alternative seating?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, there's been a lot of conversation among the principals to go in and look at that seating. Um, things that can be easily wiped down or cleaned could probably stay, um, things that are more um plush would probably go. Um, because it's harder to wipe down, harder to clean, harder to sanitize, so there's already been a lot of conversation about that. And the principals are gonna reach out to those individual teachers and have those conversations with them about what needs to go, so.
Okay. That was the only question I had for that one, sorry.
Uh, we talked about option two, uh, remote learnings, we're gonna focus more at the pre-K five level on reading, math, and language arts. Um, that's uh an emphasis for that level. Want to make sure it's clear that not all classes that are offered face-to-face or offered at home, or excuse me, for family choice, remote learning. So people need to know that um some of those classes that they want to take or did take will not be in the remote learning aspect.
Well, we have a complete list of those classes, so they're available by the time they make their choice. They're gonna do family and remote, just so they know what's available and what's maybe a determining factor for some people.
Well, I, I can't say we can do that, because we don't know if, what if, depends on staff too. If we have.
Potential candidates, I think you leave yourself an opening, but.
Well, what I'm saying is, depending upon numbers of, of, you know, if there's staff that aren't gonna be there, we only have one, maybe they only teach one thing.
Well, there's probably a list of some things that we know we are not gonna offer.
Right.
I mean, that are obvious.
Doesn't have to be an exhaustive.
Something like is assumed course courses or.
These are the courses we are assuming we'll not be able to. The first thing you have to do is kinda settle what that criteria is. So that there's not a lot of question of, should my class be online or shouldn't it be online? And so, you know, you gotta sit down and decide, you know, what's the criteria that says that really can provide us with an online environment, so, and that's just not that. While we were, while Kurt was talking, I was just thinking about, what about PE?
It's on here as a possible, no, for remote learning, PE, music band, I saw it somewhere, maybe it's the other document.
It, it's about six bullet points down.
There I am going ahead again, I'm sorry, I'll stay on that.
No, we're still on the right era, it's still in the right section, but music band, lab, and vocational courses is what it says.
Yeah, those are just examples. Which brings us to the thing, one of the options we talked about earlier, you know, pre-K through five, what we talked about in the, in the committee was that the first nine weeks, if they chose family choice for remote learning, uh, pre-K five would be the, through the first nine weeks, that's October thirtieth. Uh, and six twelve will be for the first semester, and that's through January fourteenth. And I put in there, do we require first semester for this level as well? And that was because we've had some additional con- uh, discussions, and Jason, you mentioned something earlier, you wanna kinda share? You had mentioned that about the principals.
And, yeah, just, this is what I talked about earlier, with logistics of trying to change the building schedule. If you have a large number of kids come back from remote learning, uh, that takes a great deal of time and planning um, at, at the elementary level, because every um, what do they call them? Um, so like every extra, so every music, band, um, art, each of those is, takes up a teacher's prep. That's how the teachers get their prep at that level, they go to those extra courses. And so, and you add all those kids back in, you could be adding a whole other teacher to that list of scheduling. Because if you have twenty-five kids and and that are in remote, that's a whole teacher teaching those twenty-five kids. Now those kids come back, you add them to that entire schedule, and so it takes time um to plan that. Likewise, we're gonna be dividing cafeterias up in different sections, we're gonna be moving things around, you add twenty-five kids back in, you just changed an entire lunchroom setup. Um, so that's why they were saying, they would rather have it semester versus nine weeks, to give that time to change the schedule if needed. So, and we don't even know how many we'll have choose remote, right?
And I, I do respect that, um, the scheduling issue and and how that could be a problem, somewhat of a problem, but um, it comes back a little bit to what Angie mentioned. If after nine weeks, there was really a student who hadn't been engaged enough and was having difficulty and the parent really just felt like the student needed to come back face-to-face. I would hate to think that we would refuse to do that because of scheduling. And I know that that is an issue, and I respect that, could be a problem, but um, we're making the assumption there would be twenty-five or fifty of them do that, so I, I don't know. I, I, I'm a little mixed about that, because I do think we, we need to put, we, we know remote learning is going to be difficult, we know that. Um, and the additional rigor that is going to occur, especially in the lower, not that the rigor will especially occur in the lower grades, but the difficulty in picking up new concepts and that type of thing for the younger students may be more difficult without face-to-face instruction, so, and help and assistance and that kind of thing. So I could see the lower grades maybe deciding they haven't made a good choice. I don't know.
My thoughts were to give the administration a little bit of latitude to make some exceptions, because there's, there's probably gonna be lots of exceptions as this continually changes to deal with situations as they come.
Well, and like we're saying, because I don't have any idea how many people will choose remote learning. How big of an issue could this be? So some of these things may just need to wait till we have a clue, but.
Well, where we're at right now, what, what we talked about in the curriculum committee was the first nine weeks for pre-K five. So unless we wanna change that, then that doesn't have to be made right now.
I, I guess you could just say that it's assumed that if you choose remote learning, um, you're committing, if your child's pre-K through five, you're committing to the first nine weeks, um, or for the whole semester, if you're six through twelve, with um readmission applications taken into consideration, you know, with the, the allowance that you'd have to apply to come back somehow. And that building principals have discretion and.
I guess did, did that come up, how, would you re?
Well, what we said was at the high school level, for instance, uh, you know, and I mentioned this a little bit earlier, the remote learning instruction is not day-to-day necessarily going to be the same thing as face-to-face
Right.
occurring. Now, in the big picture, of course, the same objectives should be met, and it's same skills gathered, but um, you know, to say, okay, after seven weeks, it hasn't worked, so we're gonna make a special case and let you come back in. You know, what they've done in seven weeks may not be the same that the, the in-person instruction is done in seven weeks. So I think that's why we felt like the semester was a unit that, you know, was more definite, more contained. Am I saying this right, Kurt?
Yeah, you know, part of it is, I think we're trying to you know, part of this whole logistics and 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 my, and and trying to do away with that, and 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 I certainly appreciate the latitude to make that decision. But again, those are those things that actually, if I'm getting those requests a lot, then that's actually, without a policy of some type or another, it's hard for me to make those since without some guidance there, because then it becomes totally just arbitrary from.
Right.
And then that's the way it gets seen. Um, in some regards, one of the things that we're looking at, and we understand that, even if you're in, and this is what I'm saying, even if you're in an English one class in remote, in an English one class at school, think of it this way, you're really on, you're all going to the same place, but you're really in two different paths, right? And and so trying to bring you back to that path in the middle of that trip, so to speak, is somewhat difficult. It's also very difficult for our teachers to manage when we have students moving in and out, and and really, this is the experience we saw on learning. We had students who, from the beginning, from in the spring, they had this student say, hey, we're gonna do this all online. And so what happened was um, it wasn't working, so then we had to go back and then we had to go back and we gotta get all the paper packets, because they didn't do anything online, we gotta get, get all the paper packets for them, and then they're doing paper packets. And then, you know, some kids are saying we're doing paper packets, and we assume that they are, and the teachers assume that they are, but really, they're kind of online, they're not really online. It's really kinda keeping track of, when the students sound good, keeping track of where they're at. And when you're moving them in and out, think of it just, uh, thi- think of it in 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 terms of just moving it in and out of classroom. So you've got a kid in your classroom for a while, and then nine weeks he comes out of your classroom and goes to somebody else's classroom. And just kinda keeping that coming back and forth, so that's why we look at it as a semester. The other thing in the high school you kinda look at is, that's a grading period. So everything you do in that time period is towards the grade you get at the end of that. So that's one of the other ways that we looked at it as a sophomore. I don't know if there's any one absolute right answer to this, honestly.
I, I, I'm, I'm just wondering, I know that we're asking people to let us know what they're gonna do, but have we been getting a lot of calls and requests for a remote option? I mean, are we thinking too much into, I mean, how do we have?
We haven't, I mean, the only, we've.
Interested in this?
We have not, that I'm aware of, and uh, we haven't received them here at the board office. But we also haven't sent out the op- the, the choice.
Yeah.
Now, we have said that we are planning to have be in-person starting August twenty-fourth, and that, I think that pretty much everybody, I mean, that's been publicized all over. But uh, so yeah, I mean, that's part of this, you prep and prep and prep, and it may be for not.
Right, for two people, I mean.
Yeah.
Right. I, honestly, a lot of these things, we will not have a clue until we get information back from our, from families, I think. That's why it's so important to get that as soon as we can.
Right.
I do have just a small, because, you know, we're talking about if if kids were to get behind, which brings up another question that I have. If students were gonna do remote learning, are we going to? If they chose to do remote learning, those kids are basically signing up for English one. So are we going, have we thought about, are we going to record that, that teacher? And those students are going to be held to the same accountability as the students that are in-person? Whether, so they have to watch this class and then turn the work in at the same time that the in-student, in-school students are having to do? Which would make me think that they wouldn't be technically behind if they're still doing the same.
In the curriculum meeting, we talked about the fact that um, that there may be some instances where a class lesson would be recorded. We, I think the example we used in that meeting was calculus. Saying that, well, maybe, you know, like the first hour calculus, or the first time calculus is offered that day, it could be recorded. And then anybody that's taking calculus remotely would have to tune in at a certain time so that they can see that class, you know, like 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock or whatever. But, the idea that we're going to film every, every class for, you know, remote learning every day is probably not manageable. Now, what I'm, you know, there have been groups in the district working on lesson plan templates for remote learning and, you know, they, they've done professional development on using Google Classroom and, and Seesaw and all of those things. So, there's been a lot going on about ways to elevate instruction remotely. But, remote learning is never going to be identical to in-person class learning. It, it just can't be.
What you're talking about is, is synchronous learning, right? So, but there's some issues to that. Number one, whether that's, we have to have discussions with our teachers about that because now you're videotaping in the classroom and that's, that's an issue. There, it depends on who's on that tape and whether that's a, a record or not. And, and there's just a lot of nuances that people don't, oh yeah, we'll just tape it and, and use it. And we just got to be careful with that. Now, one of the things we have talked about is making some cameras and/or using a phone available that they can make their own video. And, and, or there's a place that, in each building, that they can go and make a video type of thing and, and, and be able to send that out to those. But again, until we know that number, but I don't know that the synchronous learning or synchronous instruction is what we're going to be able to do at this point.
The thing that we saw in this spring, that students really struggle with this form of learning quickly, if you look at the research, the research supports this 100%. If you really want to increase the student learning, you need to increase the quality and quantity of feedback cycles. So, in other words, I do something, I get feedback on how I do it and then I apply it. We all learn this way, right? And so, what we find is, when you get kids in remote learning, because they're remote, the feedback cycle has drastically slowed down. They're doing their work in the absence, we even call it guided practice, they're doing their work in the absence of a teacher. And so, now what we ask our parents to do is provide that feedback. That's why a lot of parents discover they struggle with this, right?
Break down.
Because they don't really know sometimes the feedback provided in. And so, that's where that remote, it's not so much the instruction and those kind of things. Because we can get access to kids, you know, in math, we refer them to Khan Academy, we refer them. The, the problem is because as they're working, they're not, they don't have somebody sitting in the classroom providing that feedback and letting them apply that. Because they're working on Tuesday and, and in remote learning, we're trying to increase this obviously, but they might not get any feedback until Thursday. And so, that's really what slows the remote learning kids down, because of the feedback, not the instruction.
Hopefully that can improve. And I know that's something that these teachers and administrators have been working on all along since we had to go remote because we're not going to have the quantity. And we had every student for remote learning. So, they had hundreds of kids that they were trying to deal with. So, that would be different. So, hopefully that feedback will not be quite as delayed, but it still will be much delayed to in-person, so.
One of the, one of the clear things that, want to make sure it's clear, that the committee talked about, was that if, if a student is participating in remote learning, that they are not eligible to participate in extracurricular or co-curricular. And that was a discussion that we had, and, and I talked with other districts as well. Many other districts, nothing's 100% are, are following suit or were following their suit, whatever the case may be. But, if there are concerns and reasons for not being able in, to be in school and around other students, then how could you compete in a co-curricular, extracurricular situation? That's the basis that we talked about. So, that would be, that would be the recommendation moving forward. And I want to make sure that that is, is out there as well.
Right.
Okay, so that's just the draft for four, or excuse me, start of the school year. The other item, which I'm not going to, I don't think I'll go through page by page because some of it is, is in both, but it's the back to school plan, the actual plan. You know, there's some things that are highlighted there that will have to be determined and that's the school day and, and things like that. But, I do want to share that, with the board, that we've been in contact with the leadership of the ECTA. And tomorrow, we're planning to send out a, a joint memo to individual teachers. Some names that have been given from the union to meet with administrators next week to try to sit down and work through some of the parameters. And then, that affect their, their schools and get their feedback. And that will be helpful and if we need to adjust those types of items as well. But, that plan, that's planned to go out tomorrow and, and meeting next week with those individuals. So, want to make sure that the board's aware of that. At this point, you know, one of the things about closure, and I, I don't want to go too far into this because it's the what if, but we've had weekly meetings with the sta, health department. And those are the, be the first individuals that we call. You know, the questions I had this week were, you know, how many kids we sent home because of coughs and, you know, right? And so, you know, in order to, basically, we have to wait until, if, if that's a decision on whether they get tested is not a, for COVID is not our decision. We don't, we're not, even our nurses and nurse, and, and nurse, parapros aren't the ones that would recommend that. They would have to get that from their physician, but they would call it, I mean, if there's a positive test, they would be the first ones to call us back. And then depending upon that is what direction do you take? Is it, is it per building? So, something to think about as we get moving forward here. No decision tonight, but you know, are we okay with closing one of our buildings and leaving the other four open? I, I'm assuming yes, but that's, that's, I guess I shouldn't assume. So, are we two or, you know, what is it, you know, three? And, and how long is it and, and those types of things? So, be a lot of change in, in, in movement here. But, that's kind of, kind of spelled out in a, a little bit in the, the back to school plan. Just what to expect, and then some of the human resources, staffing levels, teacher evaluation, mental health, those types of things. So, we're supposed to get more in our meeting this week with the health department. We're supposed to get more direction in regards to symptoms and, and next steps. Because my point blank question was, okay, so I don't want to assume what I'm, what we're going to do. You need to tell me what you want us to do if this happens. Here's what I think we ought to do, but you're the professionals and this is your background, not ours. So, we've requested that. You know, there's things out there that, that show and we could follow the CDC, but I want to make sure that that, the local health department's on board with that as well. And we've got a great working relationship with them, so I don't see, foresee that as being any, any issues. Are there any other items? And I didn't go through the second one page by page, just on a time issue.
I felt like that very first section on page one, phase four, in-person learning, where we have the bullets, I felt like that there should be a bullet that says face masks are required. I mean, because we do, I mean, we talk about social distancing later, but we know that the face coverings is an issue to a lot of people. So, I think that maybe should be out there with the first few points.
Agreed.
And then I was just curious on the school day options, what the thinking was about the shorter day.
Well, the idea was, if we have numbers of remote learning and trying to adjust, meet the cafeteria issue as well. Meet the remote, the number one goal was, as I said earlier, staff teaching all day and turning around and doing remote learning. We can't, we just can't do that.
And I understand.
And, and, you know, and there's all, there's all sorts of schedules out there, A, B. And it just felt, trying to keep as much normalcy as possible. So, if it's every day that they're coming to school, it's better than one day versus the next day. Yeah, if we got attitude, it's probably, it's going to put some people in a bind, but at least it's every day. It's not every other day and I'm going one day and I'm doing this the next day. And, you know, so that's just, I just want to throw it out there that that, I don't know that, that's, we don't want to do that. But, I don't want to all of a sudden say, hey, we need to do this as well.
Right, I looked at the, I, I look at those schools that are going, you know, two groups of students and sending one group every other day, or one group in the morning, one group in the afternoon. And I'm wondering, I mean, we had a childcare crisis here in our county before the pandemic. Now, you only have your kids go every other day and you throw all of those children into childcare if they have working parents. I just don't, it's beyond my comprehension how districts are going to be able to do that. So, I think going every day is really important, even if we have to adjust by an hour.
Kurt, sorry, you're the only administrator here tonight, so I want to ask you. What do you, for your building, what, I mean, is there a time? Because I see like there's, it says 1:30, is that something that you think would work for your building? With your students? So, what about those students who can't drive or those type things?
Me and Kristen were talking about transportation. So, you know, and, and really that's the, called the dance, called, you know, what you have to kind of look at. So, you know, at the end of the day, I've got some wiggle room in there. And the reason I've got some wiggle room in there one way or another, because I know that it might not work with transportation. Since I've got some wiggle room in there, then we can, I can't really, I don't think I can really start earlier than 7:30.
I don't think you'll have any students there before 7:30.
But, there might be a little wiggle room in there to adjust for those transportation issues and adjust for the routes that have been running them to work and then work with other buildings. And so, at the end of the day, we've kind of got to get, know, are we going to be, are we going to be supporting it in early out? And if we do, then, you know, transportation and all the other principals need to sit and look and see what works in your building and what works in transportation. Because the start time for my building might not be the best start time for the junior high and might not be the best time for transportation. So, if you adjust those while we're towards that same goal, we've just got to know, are we all going to do something that's, that's early out?
And then have we also, like, just in that, something else that I was, had been brought up was, if they were involved in a sport or activity and we do get out early and they can't get back, we just don't know what we can do.
There's really no way I can keep them in the building under the circumstances of that one day.
Well, we had talked about, some districts have had, even in a regular day, you know, if you have a study hall last hour or whatever, that you could leave. We have kids now that are an early bird that leave and come back, so.
And I know that IHSA today, did they update their guidelines just today on sports? Who knows what we're going to have? Yeah, I saw it on the news where I came, they pulled it back.
Well, yeah, they can't have contact now, and so. We'll just see where we're going. I'm not making any public comments on that.
Even all of this doesn't address, like, when you have a, a number of children who are infected that are going to be out for two weeks.
Well, that's what, like I said, the public health department is going to work with us and say, are you closing this building or that?
Because I mean, there could be, there could be multiple, how many? And, and, and this or that. And so, in talking with them and, and talking to other school districts, being able to, they're going to take that lead. Health department is, in regards to what do we need to do? I mean, there's steps to, you know, to quarantine if we know in this or that, but we won't know if it's a positive until we get a phone call. And then you start the back tracing, right? So, yeah, so, yeah, we could, we may not get.
I'm just saying that way it's spread with college kids. It gets in the building.
Yeah, and I understand that everybody is on their summer break, but I'm just curious, like, are the, are the administrators thinking about, is there a way to get a hold of your staff to see if there's issues that they can foresee? Because I know, I, I think I know, a lot, a lot of them didn't realize they could get on and, and watch the curriculum committee. I think that was some of that. I'm just curious, like, are we going to ask for their input?
Yeah, I mean, as I said earlier, in talking with the union, working with the union in regards to, I mean, they'll be good, a good size, but you can't have a group of 30 or 50 doing this, but it's going to be by building. And, and they're providing the leaders to get the feedback from staff. Any staff can provide feedback, any staff member at any time. But, in working with the union, we're going to meet with them next week to, to get their input and, and continued input as we move forward. But, it, it's got to be similar, I mean, that's how we have, you know, our, our committees are smaller because you, and then they represent their teachers.
On more of a building level, you might be asking, I'm not sure. I can speak for myself, I can speak to the building administrators, met pretty much all day, a full day last week. I think that we, I might not be in contact with one of my staff members. But, like, here's a great example, on Monday, a guidance counselor took them in to work on scheduling for students. And so, there is a day, there was a time plan for me to sit down with guidance counselors and be able to kind of update them on what's going on and get feedback from them. And then, you know, there were just other people that I'm in contact with that this thing's come up. Same things going on in other buildings. So, in that regard, there's not, well, I would say it's formal thing at this point, but that is going on. What I'm hoping to do is that once we get some of these big decisions made, that's when we start, that's when we know exactly the direction we're taking. And that's when we start to bring those in and say, okay, so has this affected our building? All right, and then what can we do with that?
Okay, sorry, one more thing. So, I know that this has been a big thing with trying to come up with a plan for the back to school, but are we also still working on, because I think we've had five new cases in Effingham County in the last week, is that right?
Some more today.
Seven, five or seven today.
So, are we still, and I know it's difficult because there's a lot of planning going on, but are we still also looking at if school were to be remote from the get-go?
Oh, for everybody?
Yeah.
And so, with doing those laptops and stuff, if students would need it, what would be the turnaround time to get those done if, if we had to go straight to remote learning at the beginning of school year?
To have those laptops functional?
If students need them.
Yeah, we've, we've got a, we've got a ghost put together for those now so we can image those pretty quickly. And so, turning those around would not be a long process, so.
So, we, we, we could be just as prepared if we have to go straight to remote?
Have we received all those?
No.
Will we get them?
We just got 180 in today. The 410 are probably four to five more weeks out still. You know, once we get them in, though, we do have, we image all of them anyway. With the in-district image, it would just be going back and reimagining them for the remote image that we created this past spring when we were issuing those devices.
And then did we come up with anything when you were talking last time about the Verizon jetpacks? Was there anything else on that?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're $24 a month and minimum of six months. The device itself is going to be free, but the district has to sign up for six months minimum with each one of those devices. And again, it's like your cell phone, there's no guarantee it's going to work in certain locations, so.
So, again, it's really, really important that we get this information back from all of these families where they let us know, you know, what their choice is. Hopefully, we don't have to go all remote, but that's, that information will be about, do we have our computer? Do we have internet, you know, at home, that kind of thing? So, because we don't really know.
Okay, did you have anything else? Is there any, is there any item that you guys need direction on? That the board needs to decide tonight?
I don't think.
Besides the option of remote and in-person?
Other than that and, and verified the masks and the parameters on remote learning, you know, those types of things. Like, you know, moving forward, we can get that out and, and get that information. We may seek that information earlier than the 24th, but want to make sure we give enough time. There's a couple of things now that we need to make sure we got an idea, a better idea of classes and things like that, so. And there'll be questions. So.
Anything else on that? Anyone?
I'll change the name.
Let's scratch it out. Okay, so we will go ahead and move on then to the purchase of the personal protection equipment items.
So I'll hand this out to you, to realize, uh, these numbers as far as cost, James Daley provided. The industry said, right? And so a lot of these things show backward right now, but we are, we are buying through co-ops that the district belongs to. And so we get kind of priority purchasing. When looking at this microfiber cloths, uh, those really kind of go hand in hand when you go down to the disinfectant, the Virex disinfectant cleaner. One thing we've been working on is getting away with cross-contamination issues. So right now, we wash loads of laundry and we use the same white towels for everything. We don't know what we used it on previously, or what it's been used on even that day. So we're looking at changing anyway to colored microfiber towels. So green's your general purpose, blue's your glass, yellow's your toilets, urinals, those kind of things. So you know you're not using a toilet urinal towel on a tabletop or a lunchroom table or something along those lines. In doing that, we also. No, but we also want to up the number of general purpose towels we have because as you can see, when you look at the disinfectant cleaner, we're ordering four hundred and eighty bottles of that. That's enough to put one in every classroom, every library, um, offices. And so when the teacher feels like, hey, I'm gonna spray it behind this desk, they have the option to use a rag and that Virex cleaner. We looked at doing wipes, wipes are just incredibly hard to get your hands on. When I looked at buying empty spray bottles and large quantities of the Virex, it was only gonna save me ten cents and I can't find any empty bottles. They're back ordered for months. So you can buy the already full bottles for about ten cents more a bottle. So that's why we're there. The fifty-five gallon disinfectant, uh, those are for our buildings with backpack sprayers. Now, I can tell you sitting here, I realized I should add a five on there because I forgot the transportation department. And I bought them a couple of backpacks because they're gonna be spraying buses morning and afternoon. So I'm gonna have to add another fifty-five gallon drum of that cleaner on there as well. That away, we went with the fifty-five gallon drums because we're gonna be using a large quantity. Because right now, you know, the conversation when Todd Taylor and I met with the head custodians, you know, they want to spray at lunch. When teacher goat leaves for lunch, they're gonna go and spray the room down. The, the chemical we use is called QT three, has a three-minute dwell time, and in three minutes, it kills all viruses, anything on the surface. So they'll spray it down at lunch and then they'll go back in and spray it again at the end of their shift at the end of the night. And so it gets two, two full sprays. When the teacher's on prep, the custodians wanna try to get into the room, spray down each desk, wipe them down with the Virex, and knock that out. Now that's a big chore. So I'll talk about that maybe another time. But trying to make sure that we can get things cleaned as often as we can and also have cleaners available for teachers is big. So you can see quantity-wise, we're ordering a lot of cloths, hand sanitizer, those are sixteen ounces. But we're ordering sixteen, six hundred of them because we need to have them outside every lunch line. We, uh, on individual stands, we need to have them in classrooms. And, and the ones we have on the wall, those are incredibly hard to get. So we're going with the sixteen ounce bottles we can set on the counter or attached to a stand, things like that. Because those, the ones on the walls, they are going to hospitals and nursing homes and schools can get them. Uh, earlier this year, when this thing first broke out, we ordered a huge quantity of them. The truck hit Effingham, actually got almost to our thing and got called back because we were no longer a priority because schools were shut down. So we've still not gotten that order. Because it was sent to places that needed it at that moment. So, uh, that's why we have the, the sixteen ounce bottles. Uh, the KN ninety-five face mask, those are the reusable face masks. They're, they're a solid four ply face mask that has three different filters and then has the cloth on the inside, uh, so they're more comfortable. They are made to be reused over and over. We do have a, um, smaller quantity of the one-time single-use, you know, uh, that you see everywhere now. Uh, we do have a smaller quantity of those that we had left over after the lunch program that we've held on to, uh, that we'll try to pick up a few more of those. Those will be, if a student shows up and doesn't have them, we can hand them one time. Uh, these KN ninety-five, we want to make sure the staff get those, but we can actually issue, if we buy this quantity, one to every person in the district. As a second backup mask or something like that, depending on how we want to do it. Thermometers, we, we put the number fifty in there. Talking with some of the principals, you know, if a kid is in class and not feeling well, we don't want to just constantly send kids down to the office because then you get lots of contaminated. Uh, we want to have thermometers in places where a teacher can just wipe it across their forehead if they have a fever, then they go to and all, designate a location in the building to be sent home or checked by the nurse or something like that. So, uh, we're looking at fifty thermometers there. Medical gloves, it's just, and this is a beginning list, okay? This is gonna be a list we're gonna add to and continue to buy these items throughout the year. You know, fifty-five gallon drum, I hope that gets us to Christmas, but depending on how fast we're using it, I don't know if it will or not. Okay, so the reason why I'm bringing this to you tonight is, um, we have a ten thousand dollar limit on what I can purchase without board approval. Just, some of these things are gonna come from the, the SIPC co-op we're in, but that's over fifteen thousand dollars just with them. But I, if I gotta find the deals and purchase them as fast as I can, so I wanted to get your feedback on when things become available, can I buy them in this, this kind of situation? Uh, and it would only be for the PPE purchases and those kind of things, but, um, you know, or do you want to give me a number I can go up to and then I have to come back to the board? I mean, I, I just, I don't know.
Well, I, I guess one of the things I would ask is that, you know, obviously, when we purchase things, he, you know, Jason or somebody, anybody will come and ask, can I do this, can I do that? And I try to make, make sure, um, we let the board know ASAP if, if something comes up. If that would be acceptable, um, you know, in the, in the weekly letter sent home or email or whatever, just make sure you're aware of it. Because there is, right, sometimes there's sales that come up that, hey, I, we've got this in, it came in, can we get it? And so.
Yeah, the KN ninety-five mask, you know, if you approve it, I'm gonna order them tomorrow because I can get a big discount if I get them ordered before the end of this week. If I don't get that, then I, you know, so it's just things like that are coming up when they, when they come available. Now, if I can find some of these things cheaper, you know, I'm gonna go out and find them. I'm meeting with a gentleman on Monday about hand sanitizer, you know, but then again, I want to get the Health Department's feedback on whether this off-brand hand sanitizer will do the same job, so.
And I might know someone that can get access to hand sanitizer too. I'll give you his name after the meeting, so. First of all, I would support, because I, I buy this for our bank now, I know how hard it is to find these things. I would support the latitude to buy it when you can find it. Because everybody's gonna be doing exactly the same thing and this is gonna be in short supply. I did have a couple of quick questions. The N ninety-five masks, have you polled quite a few people to make sure they feel comfortable wearing those during the day? They're hard to hear through and for, if we're requiring them to be worn during the day and they're gonna wear them, you can hardly talk through those. For the education.
I would think a cloth-like mask would be better. Because they're so, I mean, they do a good job, don't get me wrong, and it might be nice to, for everybody to have one, but the practicality of the use of one of those in an environment where you have to speak is very, very. They're, they're four ply, they're, they're actually four levels thick. Uh, and that's the thing.
They're expensive.
Those are the ones that are recommended. And the cloth mask, you know, there's that thing of whether or not they are, and here's where I'm at on it. If we're gonna provide a mask, I want to make sure we're providing a mask that's proven to do the job. Or versus providing them with a mask that we don't know if it's gonna do the job or not. That's more, that's my liability brain thinking.
Yeah, no, which, which I get that a hundred percent is from a practical standpoint.
But we can do whatever, whatever.
But they will have a choice to where they're on that.
Correct, absolutely.
Correct.
And then my other thing you said on the thermometers was a swipe, hopefully they're no-touch thermometers.
The, well.
And touching forehead.
I went with the fifty-dollar slide across.
Okay.
The, you go with the no-touch, we're looking at sixty-seven dollars or more per thermometer. And at a quantity of fifty, it just jacked my price up that much higher.
Does the CDC though recommend? I thought the, the no-touch was a CDC.
Earlier this year, we were using the swipe ones we had, so that's why I put them on there, but yeah, we can.
I think we should go with the no-touch.
I would go with the no-touch on that.
There's no problem.
I mean, if they're, if they are accurate, are they accurate?
Probably more so.
Well, we did this program, I did the swipe one, but I had a alcohol swab package and I liked daytime for touch and everything else.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll look at the no-touch and.
Yeah, absolutely. No problem.
And do, do we need to? I, I guess on the, because we're supplying everybody with a cloth face mask or just one face mask?
We're not sure what the face mask is coming from the state.
It's a, they say it's a cloth, there was questions today whether we'll actually get them, but I think we'll get them.
Should we include some of that in this as well? A cloth face mask for everybody as well as an N ninety-five? Again, they're hard to find.
I, I do have providers for the cloth. I mean, I'm, I, I get overwhelmed with people saying they have things. The cloth were not too much cheaper than these N ninety-fives. Now, these N ninety-fives are about seventy percent off retail value, like I said, I got it ordered tomorrow. But, so, I can do whatever. Um, well, you know, things we talked about and the reason why, like, some of these cleaners and the quantities is we're talking about wiping the doorknobs down every hour, water fountains after every passing period, classroom sprayed at lunch, wiped down during preps. Uh, you know, classrooms are sprayed after, after school, locker rooms are sprayed, so it's just.
So what we're looking at here is, um, looking at the no-touch thermometers, adding, adding, purchase a cloth mask for all, and then probably getting some more reusable, or not reusable.
One times.
One times, disposable.
And I, I certainly, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but I would certainly be fine with an ordering if you've got the supplies and then reporting it to the board afterwards. Just as a, as an advisory standpoint.
As far as the PPE.
As far as PPE, supplies can be an exception to the policy in my opinion.
Please understand, I am cheap, so.
Well, some of this stuff, we don't want to.
I walked in our office today and I said, oh my gosh, this is.
I was just relieved to know that that first item was microfiber cloths and not microfiber clothes. We weren't buying pants and shirts.
Okay, are there any other questions for that? Okay, if not, we would need a motion in a second to approve the purchase of the PPE supplies for the 2020, 2021 school year. Obviously, the cost is gonna be higher than what we have on the sheet. Also, to allow admin to purchase the PPE equipment that could reach over ten thousand dollar limit when needed.
I'll make that motion.
By Robin.
I'll second it.
Second by Brad, roll call.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Get the motion.
Um, at this time, we're gonna, uh, need a motion to go into closed session for the employment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, and the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to the individual students.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jill, do we have a second? Second, second by Robin, roll call.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Great, um, at this time, we'll be going into closed session, um, we will be back on afterwards, thank you.